Tuesday, October 13th, and this is the Selectmen's meeting. And we just came out of Executive Session where we discuss strategies relative to the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We have a number of announcements tonight. First, I'll just mention, this weekend, the Brookline Village Pedestrian Bridge came down.
In record time.
In record time, much shorter than we expected. We expected Route 9 to be closed all weekend, and it was open midday on Saturday. And by all accounts, our contractor did a great job. Staff, I think, did a great job queuing this up and letting all the parties know and what could have been a real bottleneck for the whole region, just it seemed to be okay. And so congratulations to everyone who worked on the project. And what's amazing to me is how open and airy that area looks now. It just really opens it up. You know, it's kind of the same experience like when the Washington Street L came down in Boston. It just opened up the street and was like, oh, wow, this is a wide sunny street. So same kind of effect in Brookline Village. Selectman Franco?
I've got two announcements. First, I wanted to compliment the League of Women Voters on a really informative event they held last week about land planning. They had a Brookline resident speak who has an expertise in planning, and I think it was really designed to be the start of a conversation about land use planning in Brookline. A timely topic. I think there are a number of issues floating around, so I hope that the League continues these types of events. And I know a number of members of the Board were there along with me, and I found it informational. And I also wanted to update the Board and let them know that the BAA Half Marathon, which went through Brookline, specifically down Pond Avenue on Sunday, went off without a hitch, and I had the opportunity to talk to the organizers of the event, and they were very complimentary of our Police Department and our DPW. And I think everybody had a great, you know, 300-yard passage through the town.
Any other announcements from the Board? Mr. Kleckner, you have a couple of announcements for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first, I'd like to update the Board and the public on the town's consideration of solid waste and pay your throw. And we were planning this fall that the Board of Selectmen would convene a series of meetings and hearings on the DPW's proposal for modifications of the town's solid waste program, including implementation of a so-called modified pay-your-throw system. After considering the complex set of issues involved and some clearly stated differences of opinion about relevant data and policy implications of recommendations, I have decided to convene a task force prior to the Board's consideration. In the past, these task forces have been helpful in sorting out many of the complicated issues and trying to reach some consensus before the Board of Selectmen opens up a public process. So my intent is to assemble a task force of key stakeholders and citizens, and that would be convened on a regular basis. It'll probably only take, I'd say, a few weeks to two months, and at that point, I think we would be prepared to then allow the Board to engage the public in that process. The second is unfortunately not good news, and I know that the Board and the public is certainly aware of these allegations made of one of our firefighters over the weekend. But unfortunately, there was two incidents over the weekend that I feel the town should publicly state, and so I'm going to read a press release that is just going out. "We are aware of allegations made over the weekend against Brookline firefighter Joseph Ward III, assault and battery, and a separate incident involving firefighter Jeremy Joseph operating under the influence and leaving the scene of an accident. Such allegations are troubling, and the town of Brookline takes them very seriously if these allegations are substantiated. Swift and appropriate action will be taken. Both firefighters have been placed on administrative leave, and an investigation is underway for each. The firefighters, who are civil service employees, have due process rights under civil service law, and the town will take appropriate actions commensurate with the findings of the investigation and in accordance with civil service law." Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our miscellaneous calendar, the first item is -- have you signed up for public comment?
I did send an email. It's a good one.
Okay.
Regina Frawley, community member from 16. This is an announcement that this Friday will be our last senior social at the South Brookline Senior Social at Putterham Branch Library of this season. It's the end of five years of doing this, if you can believe it. It's amazing. It's just amazing. So when we do some in the spring, God willing, we'll be starting on sixth year, and I just can't believe it myself.
Wow.
Yeah. I mean, it's just stunning. But here's -- we have little perks here and there, and the very first one we had was well advertised and well attended, over 30 people, was the cookout provided by our Recreation Department, which we love and they love, and we all have a love fest, and it really goes well. Oh, we do. We do. We're a good group. And now, the Health Department has sponsored four weeks of yoga, which we've just concluded, and we're very happy. We didn't think Karen Wentz could be replaced, and technically, she's not being replaced. We loved her dearly. But we also -- she gave us somebody that is turning out to be really good, really, really, and people really like his style as well. So we've been very fortunate to have a compatible yoga instructor to help us not strain too much. That said, this Friday, we have a box lunch provided by our State Representative, Ed Coppinger. And I would just love people to let me know if they want to come out of courtesy to Representative Coppinger to give him a rough idea how many people might be coming. I know he'll bring extra anyway, but still, we've averaged over 30 all the season, so that's a significant increase in our average. So I wanted to announce it, and my phone number at home is 617-469-0052. Just tell me you're coming. Leave a message. If I don't pick up, just please leave a message, and you'll be welcome. And today, we start at 10:30. We go till 1:00. At 10:30, we have coffee and tea provided by the Senior Center and pastries provided by Cheryl Ann's, and they're all kosher. And then we'll have the box lunch, and there we are. And I just got wonderful, wonderful news from the Recreation Department. Some of you might know, I've been working with Sarah Lynn O'Leary to make South Brookline Putterham area more walkable, and they're going to be putting in benches and other tables in the tiny little park next to the library that's part of the library. And I think it's going to be handicap accessible, which is what Sarah Lynn pushed for. So we're looking for -- we're going to be holding neighborhood discussions at the request of Erin Chute, but I'm delighted. I'm thrilled, and we're very happy with the front donated services of a landscape architect at Putterham. Nothing needs watering there. It's a rock garden with fantastic perennial plants that need nothing, a lot of succulents, et cetera. They come in every rare once in a while to weed, and that's it. And I thought that was just a brilliant new concept in front of the library. So that's all our news, and I hope that some people listening here, and maybe you have some listservs that you can spread the word, just give me a call. We would love to have you come, and I'm sure the State Rep will figure out a way to feature. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Regina.
Oh, it's at 9:59 West Roxbury Parkway. Plenty of parking, but also Bus 51 comes almost right to the front door. You get off at Putterham.
Once an hour.
Well, unfortunately, yes. Unfortunately, yes. We don't do our socials on holidays or Sundays because then you don't even get it once an hour. There's no bus at all. Thanks very much.
Sure. Okay, moving on to our miscellaneous calendar, the minutes on of October 6th, I have a tiny edit.
I had a few small edits as well.
Yeah, I have an edit also. Excuse me.
Okay, I'll move acceptance of the minutes as amended. All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is the question of approving and executing a contract in the amount of $12,210 with Margaret Wood to facilitate and organize the public phase of the ninth K-8 school study. Ms. Bruton?
Hello. Kara Bruton, Economic Development Director for the Town of Brookline. You do have in your packets a contract between the town and Pink and Company. Margaret Wood, that's the company that she works for. Pink and Company has recently been hired as the owner's project manager, kind of the, you know, the project manager for the city of Boston, as they begin their large school facility study that you might have seen in the paper. That's separate from the architects and other types of consultants, including MGT, that will be doing work for Boston. Margaret will be handling, kind of from the city's perspective, that interface between the consultants and the city. In the city of Cambridge, she has other -- her background is in public facilities and management of public facilities. That's her kind of deep knowledge of her career. She's fallen into this pattern of being asked to facilitate public meetings. For the city of Cambridge, for example, she's done several public facility meetings with the Cambridge Housing Authority and has been brought in when there was kind of a disconnect between the public and the architects. We are asking that this contract be signed. It will be signed by both the Selectmen and the School Committee for $12,210. That would take us through the public phase that we look very much forward to getting into, beginning October 22nd, most likely through the end of the year.
Right. So--
Sorry, and one last thing that I should read into the record is the funding is coming from a mix of school and Selectmen funds, $5,210 from the Selectmen's contingency fund, and $7,000 from the School Department.
And coming from Cambridge, which I know is a very process-oriented community, much like us, is a good thing. And just for the public, October 22nd at 7:30, I believe, is going to be the time, will be a presentation regarding the K-8 school site study. So for anyone interested, mark your calendar. Should be a very interesting presentation. Any comment, questions? So I will move--
We should say that that's going to be a presentation for our Board and the School Committee.
Right.
And the public's welcome to come and listen, but it wouldn't be a public forum in terms of everyone getting to speak. There will be some subsequent public forums.
Right. And that's what Ms. Wood is going to be helping us with, and that the public comment phase will be after the presentation, or meeting subsequent to the presentation. That's a better way to put it. I will move approval and authority to execute a contract in the amount of $12,210 with Pink and Company to facilitate and organize the public phase of the ninth K-8 school study. All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
I'm going to abstain.
Selectman Heller?
Still am.
I'm reverting here.
Aye.
And Selectman Green?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Next item is the question of approving and authorizing the Chair to execute the following FY 2016 CDBG subrecipient agreements. First is to the Brookline Housing Authority. Should we do these all together? And the second is for the youth training program and the Brookline Learning Project and the Next Steps Program. Mr. Viola?
Good evening. I'm here to request that the Board approve and authorize Chairman Waschinsky to execute these four contracts. Three public service contracts and one capital improvement contract related to energy efficiency and residence security. The Board previously approved the budgets for all of these items as part of your approval of our one-year action plan back in May. My department submitted the one-year action plan to HUD after you voted on it. Essentially, execution of these contracts will allow the Housing Authority to begin drawing down on CDBG fiscal funds for this fiscal year. Just quickly, I know the Board knows the Brookline Learning, Youth Training, and Next Steps programs are vital longstanding programs that offer needed services such as English language classes, job training, counseling, and referral services, all geared towards low and moderate income youth and adults. And there's no doubt CDBG directly supports these programs and helps the program managers to do more outreach to residents. As the Board also knows, the town and the Housing Authority have a long history of working together to meet our joint goal of providing safe and suitable housing for Brookline residents. The Capital Improvements Project will actually be to replace seven inefficient boilers at two BHA developments, Colonel Floyd and Walnut Street, and in place will be, obviously, new energy-efficient models. And as well, the installation of security cameras at BHA's High Street Development will provide residents with a greater sense of security. So that's a quick overview of what these projects will be funding. I just wanted to note that Patrick Dober, BHA Executive Director is here. If there are any more specific questions that I can answer?
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, no, I'll just say that the CDBG Committee went over these items in great detail prior to it coming to this Board, and all very helpful and necessary programs.
Any other questions, comments? Then I'll move that we approve and authorize the Chair to execute the following FY 2016 CDBG subrecipient agreements. One is to the Brookline Housing Authority, Energy Efficiency, Residence Security, in the amount of $276,467. Youth training program in the amount of $53,078. The Brookline Learning Project, $9,960, and the Next Steps Program for $8,820. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
The next item is a question of awarding and executing a contract for roadway improvements on various streets in the amount of $991,375.28 to Newport Construction Corp. of Nashua, New Hampshire. Mr. Ditto?
Good evening. This contract involves the reconstruction of five streets. Rossin Roads from Winthrop Road to Garrison Road. Addington Road from Winthrop Road to Coben Crescent. Woodland Road from Heath Street to Hammond Street, the Eastally side of Hammond Street. Winthrop Road from Royal Road to Beacon Street. And lastly, Heath Street from Belmont Road to Brookline Town Line. On September 3rd, we solicited proposals. We received five proposals, with the three little being Newport Construction, Mario Soucy Sons, and Russell Corp. Newport Construction was the low qualified bidder. We checked his references out. They were fine. So we're recommending awarding the contract, executing the contract to Newport. I might add that we've prioritized the streets and how we will reconstruct them. First will be Rossin Roads. Second will be Heath Street. Third will be Woodland Road. Fourth, Addington. And fifth, Winthrop. The national grid is still working on Winthrop Road, so that's why it's at the bottom. We anticipate that we can get Rossin Road done this year and most of Heath Street. The remaining three will wait till next year. If you vote this approval tonight, a notice to proceed will be given to Newport Construction, and we will ask him to come in and give us a definitive schedule.
Selectman Heller?
Are you planning or thinking about any measures of traffic calming or any changes to the current configuration of the street and the parking, et cetera?
We are in one of the streets. Heath Street will be getting a raised crosswalk, which is a form of traffic calming.
And have you notified the community? And has the Transportation Board held any kind of a public hearing about that?
Yes.
Okay. And that's already been done?
That's been done.
Okay.
That's actually something that that neighborhood has been asking for, for a long time.
Just wanted to make sure.
Just want to say, I'm delighted to finally see my street on the list after many, many years of me complaining about the excessive number of potholes. So I just wanted to check and make sure I understand correctly, because if Rossin Road is dug up at the same time as Addington, we won't be able to get to our houses. So it's -- they're going to be sort of separate.
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
At long last.
But you didn't get any special treatment, now?
I certainly didn't, because how long have I been complaining to you? I mean, I have lived on the street for --
Shh.
Close to 30 years, and it has not been resurfaced in that entire time. So no, I didn't get any special treatment.
I noticed that the estimate, the internal estimate for the cost of these five streets being resurfaced is far above the low bidder by about $400,000. So I'm wondering whether we're just timing this well and taking advantage of a good time to do roadwork, or the assumptions have changed and we're going to see closer proximity between our estimates and what the bids are going forward.
I think in this case, timing was everything. This is the ideal time for us to get these projects out. Contractors are looking to either keep his crews going a little longer in the winter or knowing that he has something to go to in the springtime.
Okay, so I'll move that we award and execute the contract for roadway improvements on various streets in the amount of $991,375.28 to Newport Construction Company of Nashua. All those in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ditto. And the next item is a question of accepting a donation in the amount of $1,500 from the Brookline Community Foundation to be used in connection with an after-school environmental education program through Brookline Recreation for Steps to Success. Ms. Paradies?
Thank you. Lisa Parades, Recreation Director. I'm here, as Selectman Waschinsky said, to ask that you approve a donation that was granted to us from the Brookline Community Foundation. It is through our environmental education program. It'll be an after-school program for Steps to Success kids, grades four through six. It's already actually begun, and they're doing an incredible job. They do a lot of off-site work, and it's obviously science-based, so well-attended, and it's a great program, so.
Okay, well, please send our thanks for this grant. Any questions, comments? Okay, so I'll move that we accept the donation, the amount of $1,500, from the Brookline Community Foundation to be used in connection with an after-school environmental education program through Brookline Recreation for Steps to Success students. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And we have a number of temporary wine and malt beverage licenses, two wine and malt beverage licenses. We -- oh, I'll -- and then, okay, I'll do the two wine and malt beverage licenses, and then we'll do -- there's a Sunday opening. We'll do that one separately. So we have the question of granting a temporary wine and malt beverage license to the Pierce PTO in connection with a fundraiser to be held on October 17th from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at 20 School Street. I'll move that we grant that wine and beverage license, and I'll also move that we grant a temporary wine and malt beverage license to the Brookline Teen Center in connection with a fundraiser to be held on October 17th, 2015, from 7:00 to 10:00 at 40 Aspen Wall. And I'll note for the record that the applications appear to be in order. The Police Department has recommended approval. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. And the last item on our miscellaneous calendar is a request to approve Prestige Food and Liquors, Inc., doing business as Baystate Foods, holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage licenses, package goods store at 1416 Beacon Street to open at 10:00 a.m. on Sundays in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 138, Section 15. And this is taking advantage of a relatively new law.
I'm going to speak to this for a second.
Sure.
I am -- I'm going to vote no on this as a matter of principle. I am a young fan of the blue laws and don't think that we should be selling alcohol in Brookline before noon. So this is really a meaningless vote. It's purely on principle, since this is a notification rather than really an approval by this Board, so has nothing -- my no vote has nothing to do with this particular store or any of their past behavior. It's simply my personal principled belief.
Yeah, we should explain that--
Please do.
-- state law now allows people to open on Sunday earlier, and they simply have to go through some notification process to us, and we typically put it in the form of changing their license to allow earlier hours, but really, we don't have a lot of say over this.
Right, thank you. And I am not as morally bound as Selectman Franco on this question.
If it's even a moral issue. And so early liquor every other day. It doesn't need to be any different.
Just call me Cotton Mather.
So I'll move that we approve the request of Prestige Food and Liquors, Inc., DBA, Baystate Foods, holder of all kinds alcoholic beverage license, as a package goods store at 1416 Beacon Street to open at 7:00 a.m. on Sundays in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
No.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Okay, moving on to our main calendar, and the first item is recognizing Brookline resident Jenny Harrington in connection with her award-winning participation in the Summer Special Olympic World Games. Ms. Paradies?
Good evening. A little bit of great news tonight, so as I said down in the Parking Row Commission meeting just a little bit earlier, I want to say that we are, I think, all in the company of greatness, because Jenny Harrington, who is a Brookline resident, has been a longtime Brookline resident, has been competing for the Special Olympics, for the Brookline chapter of the Special Olympics for 10 years and more. And over the past summer, competed, as you said, in the World Games in LA, where she competed in the 100-meter freestyle, 100-meter relay, 200-meter, and 400-meter freestyle. She earned a silver medal in the 100 freestyle, a silver medal in the 200 freestyle, fifth place in the 400 freestyle, and her team earned a gold medal in the 100 relay. In addition to competing in the Games, Jenny had the chance to meet and both speak with -- both meet and speak with First Lady Michelle Obama. She was also interviewed by the LA Times and has been on TV several times. So as I said, we are in the presence of somebody whose determination, her motivation, her drive for athletic excellence is really an honor to be in her presence. So we are happy to have her amongst us, and I thank you for recognizing her and honoring her for her achievements tonight.
Wow.
With us tonight as well is Shelby Jackson. She's a new import from Texas. She's a rec therapist. She runs the rec therapy division at Recreation, and she has put together a photo montage for Jenny, and we are going to be presenting that to her tonight.
Wow.
Wonderful. What a wonderful job. We are honored-- We are honored that you've represented Brookline so well.
Yeah, real inspiration.
Yeah.
I think Ms. Paradies summed it up really well in her memo to us, that you're an inspiration, and you've taught us that discipline and determination and positive attitude really pays dividends, so congratulations, and thank you for being here this evening.
Hold this place so the camera can see. Just behind you if you'll look. I'll pass it on.
I would like to add, as someone who swims, not a swimmer, someone who swims, you're quite an inspiration to me, because I really enjoy it, and, you know, to see someone achieve what you've achieved, you know, sort of motivates me to get out there and try to do better. So, thank you.
Thank you. You can set yourself some goals if you want, just set some goals, and I think you can do it.
Yep.
If you want to, you can do what you want to do.
Thank you.
Wow.
Great.
Pictures.
Thank you. We would like to get a photo if possible.
Sure.
With Jenny and the selectmen.
Sure.
That'd be fabulous.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good patience. You should get right in the middle here.
Sure.
Don't hold too long.
Yeah. Excellent. Great. One, two, three.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Sha-
Shavari.
Shavari.
Good evening.
And you're interview, come, sit, and you're interviewing for the Camera Oversight Committee?
What?
And/or Park and Rec.
And/or Housing Advisory Committee. It's not on the list, and I don't know why.
Okay, all right.
No, the third one that's now listed is Housing Advisory.
Okay, so why don't you tell us about yourself, and what draws you to these three committees or commissions?
Well, I'm interested, just to begin with, in participating in Brookline in general, and I saw that there was an announcement in the paper that they were looking to fill seats on particular boards and committees, and these three in particular seem very interesting to me. In general, though, my background is on practicing attorney. I've lived in the Boston area, downtown Boston, and now Brookline, for about twenty years. I currently reside at Park Street, which is down the street. I'm not an owner, I am a tenant, and I participate locally in sports. I volunteer over at Hall's Pond for plantings. I try to integrate myself within the neighborhood whenever I walk around, and, you know, I walk home from work every day from up and around the State House area, so I get a pretty good glimpse of, you know, along that beacon route of what, you know, Brookline has, and I've always wanted to contribute more to the neighborhood, and feels that I'm getting a little bit older, and pretty much decided that Brookline is going to be a place where I want to settle and purchase a home and start a family. I have a girlfriend now, seven years, and she can tell you it's exactly seven years and a couple of months. It's in your mouth.
Are you missing your anniversary to be here?
Yeah, she's seven years, one month, and I think, yeah, one month on Thursday. At least that's what she reminded me.
That and that we're not getting in the way of romance. Right, yeah.
No, she was, she's very thrilled about this. Actually, we were at Lars Anderson yesterday for Columbus Day. Spent all day there, it was beautiful, and we just walked around, and she actually asked me questions about boards and committees, what would I say, you know, what am I interested in. She's very excited about me participating.
I have a question.
You go.
So, when I read your application for the Sims Camera Oversight Committee, I think I'm getting a little ambivalence about the use of cameras in public spaces.
Ambivalence from my point of view?
Yeah.
To be honest, it's been a little while since I submitted that application, but I'm definitely taking your word for it.
Well, you call it a necessary evil, wanting to weigh peace of mind versus privacy rights, and so I-
Fine, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I just wondered if you wanted to comment on, you know, what your thoughts are.
Yeah, the point of that was finding a balance.
Yeah, okay.
I realize it would be naive to think that in this day and age, we don't need some form of surveillance protection, but on the other hand, you know, there's a lot of privacy rights, and people, people get antsy when they think that there's a potential that their movements are being monitored, you know, whether, you know, it's good or bad, and, you know, I recognize the need for it, and I recognize the wants of people to, you know, be able to walk down the street and not think that, you know, if they're, you know, talking on the phone, or, you know, scratching their behind or something, that they're not always going to be filmed.
Okay.
But, yeah, I'm very interested in that program. I've probably seen a few spots that I know that could probably use more cameras, but I know that's probably a little different than the actual program dollars.
Well, one of the issues, I wouldn't ask, you don't have to comment on this, because you haven't been on the committee or heard the debates, but we currently have some cameras up and down Beacon Street and Harvard Street, but we only allow them to be turned on at night.
I'm aware of it.
And some people, I know I'm representative to the Council on Aging, and I know many of the seniors say, hey, you should turn them on earlier, because by 10 o'clock, they're already home.
Well, a lot of the riffraff comes out after 10.
Hey, I'm not coming out after 10. It's past my bedtime. I do have a question also. I guess I'm really asking you just to give us a sense of how you're thinking about this. I mean, cameras are necessary evil, you say, and I agree, and, you know, the struggle against surveillance cameras is a struggle that was long ago lost, but how far would you, I mean, give me your thoughts as to how far you would take the placement of public surveillance cameras. We had an incident near Park Street.
Yes, Marion, yeah.
Right, where a camera, you know, outside of all the apartment buildings would have caught, you know, a perpetrator. I mean, that's an extreme example, but, you know, a lot of crimes occur in areas outside business districts. How far would you take, you know, public surveillance cameras? And that's a very general-
You mean, within the more residential areas, yeah? The Marion-Park Street, that incident, is something I actually just discussed this weekend, and I thought that if perhaps there were cameras abutting, maybe like Harvard and Marion, up where Park and Marion reach up the beacon on that side, you know, something that there, like, that could have been thwarted, or at least, I don't know if it would have been a deterrent, if it could be. Putting something into the neighborhoods is definitely something that would have to be highly discussed. I think there are park areas that are within the residential, thickly populated zones that could use cameras in and around the egress and ingress areas. I've always wondered why there weren't more, kind of, cameras.
You'd want to take your girlfriend there and not have it public notice.
Well, yeah. Now, it seems like in Brookline, probably in a lot of communities, there's a lot of teenagers, or even college students, that find their ways into conducting whatever they're doing outdoors, and in generally flock-to-park areas, and it sometimes isn't the greatest thing for them to do, and annoys residents, and I've thought many times that if there were cameras that could be turned on once a complaint was received by the police, you know, it could, it could stop it before it started, but I'm not opposed to having cameras brought into the residential areas, it's just you'd have to be very careful with it.
Tell us about your interest in the Housing Advisory Board.
Housing Advisory Board. I've been a tenant, and I have been a landlord in Boston for, it hasn't happened, since 1992, so it's been a while. I feel though a lot of times in Brookline, there's not a great representation for tenants. I know, I know the Housing Advisory Board has a great focus on building and maintaining housing.
It's affordable, their focus is affordable housing.
Probably moderate, high moderate housing, but within that, I also feel like there's a population that's already here, whether they're young professionals that have moved a little outside of Boston, and a lot of them leave Brookline for whatever reason, and I feel as though some of those reasons are because they don't feel as though they're well-represented in Brookline, they don't get their money's worth, or they don't get a fair shake from their landlord, and there's not a lot of resources for these people to hammer out issues that they may have. And one of the other interests I have is how to, you know, get somebody like myself and my girlfriend to become homeowners in Brookline, how to convert us from renters into productive resident citizens of Brookline that own a home and raise a family and send kids to school, and I feel like there's a gap there, where it's just a lot of focus, which is a good focus, on low-income, but not a great focus on, you know, moderate-income people, people that live and work every day and want to stake their claim there, and not necessarily, you know, receive assistance for it.
Questions, comments from the board?
To be honest, I could, I could talk for hours about, like, landlord-tenant law, landlord-tenant issues and representation. I feel like Brookline in general entirely needs some kind of resource office, because whether they, Brookline, in my opinion, realizes it or not, the town is, has a significant population of renters.
Oh, yeah.
And it only increases every year, and they just seem to not really want to recognize it.
The Camera Oversight Committee has a vacancy. Park and Rec looks pretty full, and I don't know about the Housing Advisory Board. We're not going to vote tonight, so you'll hear from us shortly.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, you said the Park and Rec was-
Yeah.
They're full. Okay. So, you're not going to vote on it, vote on it tonight?
No, we're not voting tonight.
Or receive an email or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Roberta Schnorr at the Conservation Commission. Welcome.
Thank you.
So, what have you been up to on the Conservation Commission?
Uh, I was trying to remember, as I was driving over here, whether I'm going into my, completing my fifth term or sixth term. It feels like it's been a long stretch, but, you know, it's an interesting, it's an interesting area. It's a great group of people, though our membership has evolved over the years, and we are about to launch, you are all probably very aware, the open space planning process yet again. I was co-chair of two of the earlier plans from the perspective of the Conservation Commission, and at the moment, we're all getting kind of jazzed about this next round. It comes up very quickly, but it's, it's a subject, I think, that all of us are very concerned about, and so that's, I would say, my focus, has been my focus on the board. I mean, you know, everybody has a bit of a specialty there. I would say my, my main interest has been in unprotected open space, and ways in which the town can address greater protection, and it's a very dicey issue. Now, Nancy Daly and I were on a subcommittee to devise a policy around conservation restrictions, which is one way that the town can do something that doesn't have sort of a direct monetary outlay in terms of protecting open space. We've had conversations since that policy. I think it was a great thing to implement that, and we've been talking to some private landowners about possible restrictions, and we've had some additional restrictions, but it's an area that I think, you know, we need to continue to focus on. One of the things that I've noticed over the last couple of years, I mean, I think everyone is aware of it, is how much infill development there has been in town, and really, you know, you can look at that a number of different ways, but in one way, we are losing open space, you know? Double lots have become single lots, yards have become parking spaces, and all of that has implications for, you know, everything from our storm drains and sewers, you know, the infrastructure, it puts more pressure on all of that, to parks, where we need more open space for all of the people who are in town. So, it's a, it's a really interesting area and a delicate balance, and that's where I've been trying to focus.
Yes, Selectman Green is going to be our-
Oh, wonderful.
-rep on the open space plan. Selectman Daly?
I just want to say I'm delighted to hear you're still getting jazzed about these things. Thank you for your many years of working hard on the issues.
You're welcome.
Are there any issues, problems, that you'd like to bring to our attention?
Uh-
Trends?
Trends, well, no, I think, you know, I think an area that we continue to want to work on is coordination among town departments on green issues and conservation-related issues. And one thing, for instance, we are hoping to do is bring our five-year open space plan in line with the town CIP, which it hasn't been historically, and it can be very frustrating to try to, you know, plan ahead when, you know, there's other parts of town on a completely different schedule, especially where money is involved. So, I think that would be an important way in which we could, you know, get on the same page. And in addition, I think, you know, I mean, it connects to that, but we've been talking, for instance, on the commission, a lot about green street projects, and, you know, we have to, we're constantly trying to figure out where engineering is on redoing a street. You know, we find out after the fact, oh, well, it's already been planned, and therefore there really aren't opportunities to consider some of the, some of the new technologies that are out there that might really make a difference in some places. So, I think that's an area where I think, you know, we'd like to see some, some more coordination. But on balance, I would say the town has been moving in the right direction that way, and that there is a lot of communication. It's not, it's not that people, you know, are intending to go in different directions, it's just, it's helpful if you can set up the systems so that things really do dovetail.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you for all your work.
Yes.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And thank you for re-upping.
All righty. Take care.
Thank you, and I look forward to working with you.
And we'll look forward to seeing you. Take care.
Thank you, and, yeah, we're not voting tonight, but you'll hear from us. Next one up is Sonal Javeri for the Diversity, Inclusion, and Human Relations Commission, and the Women's Commission. Did I say your name right?
Javeri, yes.
Javeri.
Hi.
Hi, tell us about yourself.
Um, so I've been a longtime resident, homeowner of Brookline, and this is my 35th year here. Live in South Brookline, and I raised two kids, I went through the school system, but I've been mostly in my own little group for so many years, and finally, my kids are out of the house, and I have a little free time, so I thought I would look into giving back to this town, and these were the two cushions that seemed- And these were the two cushions that seemed of interest to me. I'm an educator. My career is as an educator and in research. And I still teach credit a lot. I teach a lot of ESL-type courses, but to scientists. And I feel like I could help a lot with outreach to women that are in need of any kind of language training, et cetera. I'm also in India and I grew up in India. And I felt like I could contribute to the diversity aspect of the commission.
Can I just ask, were you, would you be interested in serving on both if, because there are openings on, on both, yeah?
I think I would. I haven't been an activist and I, I looked at the, just last night, I, I went online and I looked at the Diversity, Inclusion Commission and it's like a can of worms up in the air. But I think I love to be challenged.
Well, it's, it would be, I, I, we actually have fairly, you probably know this, we have a fairly large Asian population in town. And there are, there's currently two Asians on there, but one is going off, so, and he's Chinese, so it's a different, different, different kind of aspect of the Asian population. So I think it would be, you'd be able to bring, you know, a new...
Different perspective.
Different perspective, a viewpoint that would be relevant to...
Two very different commissions. That's good.
Well, thank you for putting yourself forward and getting involved.
Yes.
And injecting some fresh blood in you.
I may have bitten up more than that. But that is easy to handle, but we'll see.
It probably will be, but I think you could contribute a lot to particularly the Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations Commission.
Yeah.
You know, the South Asian perspective that you'd bring, you know, would be an important, you know, different way of looking at some of these issues than maybe we're looking at them now. So I think that'd be a good fit.
That's a good thing, yeah. Okay. So we're not going to vote tonight, but you'll hear from us shortly. Thank you for applying. And we have one more, Kate Poverman for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you very much for having me. And the name is actually Poverman.
I'm sorry.
If you get it within 10 years, you'll beat my husband who... It's been a long time to figure out how to pronounce it.
We seem to be dealing with a lot of relationship issues this evening.
Yeah, yeah. This is like car talk when somebody calls in about their car, but then they start in on their boyfriend or something. Exactly.
So tell us about yourself and your interests in the ZBA.
Sure. I've been a resident for 22 years. I grew up in Newton, but I'm very much a Brookline person at this point. I have two girls who went all the way through, are now in college, and am in somewhat of a similar situation as your previous person who spoke with you. Now that my girls are in college and I consider myself retired, which my husband is not happy about, I look to get more involved in things that interest me. I'm trained as a securities lawyer, which gives me absolutely no basis for being on a zoning board, but the comparable part is that securities laws, like zoning laws, are very Byzantine. They're very detail-oriented. They are incredibly complex. And that's also what fascinates me about being on the zoning board is dealing with those complexities. And in addition, I've had experience, as I mentioned, in my application in terms of doing arbitrations, doing lots of depositions, trials, hearings, et cetera. So I think that those skills might have a chance at some point to be helpful.
And I think you were very involved in a neighborhood issue recently.
Yes.
So you have some familiarity with some of these issues from that perspective.
No, that's, that's absolutely true. I, I live in the Crown and Shield neighborhood, which is now facing the issue of affordable housing coming across the street. And more than that, what's really coming into play is the intersection and interface of 40B, affordable housing and preservation and other town needs. Knowing of the issues that have faced the town with Hancock Village, I appreciate how difficult these situations are and how much of a intermediary the ZBA can be. I think that what's really important as a member of the zoning board is to hear the constituency and work with the other boards in the city. Planning, or town, planning, selectmen, conservation, and all the way down the line. I think that sort of openness is very important as a member of the ZBA. And I frankly think that my lack of rental or real estate experience is in my favor because I'm beholden to no one. I have no vested interest in what happens, other than perhaps pride as will come along. But it is something I'm very interested in and I think the town faces a lot of challenges in terms of balancing everything it has to balance. The real need for affordable housing, the real need for commercial enterprise, and the need for preservation.
Plus the legal framework of 40B, which is imposed on us, which really gives the ZBA a special role in a sense that it doesn't have in, in other aspects of zoning.
Well, it's very difficult in terms of what I've looked at, when you look at what the duties of the ZBA, AZBA is in terms of effectuating 40B. It really tries to put a stranglehold on the jurisdiction and the decisions they make. So I think it, it's a question of parsing that and community interests and what's in the, you know, best interest of the community. It's, 40B is a very difficult question.
Right. But 40B also gives the ZBA certain rights to ask for certain information.
Yes.
And I would hope that our ZBA would take advantage of all the powers that it has, even if, even if they are limited.
Well, I think that's very important is to do exact that. Take advantage of the tools that it has to arrive at what's hopefully the correct answer or best answer for the town.
Or the best answer.
Yeah.
That you can hope for. And it may not even be the best answer for the town.
Yeah.
It's whatever the best answer under the law.
Sometimes it's splitting the baby, you know?
I just like to speak to your, your abilities, your writing, your ability to explain concepts to the people who are promoting the LHD. And because I live near there, a lot of that material came, came to me by email and I very much appreciated the work that you did. And I think it was very clear, it was well-done, and I know the neighbors appreciate it as well. I just wanted you to make, to make that point.
Thank you. You got to have been a great group to work with.
So I want to shift the conversation away from 40B, not to diminish it, but that's its own sort of separate suite of issues, which I think we all sort of are of like minds of, what we've, what we've said about it. I'm wondering if you could speak to your satisfaction or dissatisfaction with the types of development you see in town? So there's a lot of building that's been going on. Some of it is by right, some of it is a result of ZBA decisions. I'm wondering if you're sort of happy with the general suite of things that you've seen done, or there are particular trends that you are concerned about? And don't worry so much about the as, as of right versus what had to go through the ZBA.
Well, you know, it's a, it's a very hard question, especially because the town has been faced with so many hard issues in terms of development, in terms of schools, developing new schools or sufficient schools and resources. What concerns me is, one of the things which concerns me is when people can come in and build McMansions in an area that is totally not in step with that, in addition to being in bad taste. You know, I think that they're not generally something that the town needs. And I think that some of the plans I've seen from the planning department about like the Coolidge Corner renovations and some of the hotels that are going up, part of me says, why do we need three new hotels? And part of me says, well, there must be something I don't know that justifies the redoing the one at the Holiday Inn, the one across the street from Lamora, and I guess one considered down on...
Cleveland Circle. Cleveland Circle and the Red Cap Site.
Yes, yes.
111 was.
What's that?
111 was.
Okay, yeah. So I think commercial development is very important. And based on what I've seen from attending a couple of meetings, the town seems to be working very well in terms of that. And just as someone who drives around and curses when she can't find a parking space, you know, behind Harvard Street, I think that we need to address the needs of our people on a very basic basis. You know, I'd, I'd really want to know from you folks what you see as the greatest need and challenge facing the ZBA, but I don't know if this is the format for it.
Yeah, I, I think we'll have to be careful what we say. But I, I do have a, I mean, I would say one thing I would like to see from all our boards and commissions, but I, I don't think we've gotten any of this from the ZBA, is I would like to see them occasionally say to us, you know, you kind of have a gap here and maybe you guys want to be looking at that, you know, to, you know, things, things would work better for, for us if this was explained better or filled in or the zoning...
In terms of the bylaw?
Yeah, in terms of the bylaw.
Yeah. Well, that makes a lot of sense.
I'll say that I think one of the biggest challenges for the ZBA is the workload. All our boards and commissions are very busy. And clearly, over the past 18 months, there have been a number of high-profile ZBA proceedings. But the ZBA meets very frequently and it's a steady stream of work.
Okay, Ben, let's not scale off the candidates.
Well, I was wishing at the decisions in minutes and I'm like, holy cow. You know, like how many do they have in 2015 alone? And who writes those, by the way? Is it the board or staff or a combination?
There's staff.
Okay.
And, and the ZBA also touches a lot of issues. So you alluded to parking, there's some design review type things, allowing, you know, exceptions from setbacks and roofline changes and exceeding FAR, you know, all these sorts of things. But it's a lot of issues and there are, there's always something happening in town. So I think my observation from the outside looking in is there's always something to be done and therefore there's not a lot of time for reflection and contemplation of trends or really to hear what you heard Selectmen Daly say, for, for the ZBA to come to us and say, you know, we've, we've actually observed that there's this huge gap in, in your zoning and you may want to take care of it.
Yeah. You know, one of the things, you talk about McMansions and, you know, each of those McMansions went through the process and many of them got ZBA decisions. And, you know, they, they, they happen because they can.
Yes.
And sometimes it's because of a flaw in our bylaw. And sometimes it's taste or the way it's interpreted. And maybe the interpretation isn't going the way it was intended. So, you know, you always have to work within the framework of, of the law. And sometimes it's going to conflict, as you know, with, with personal taste. You can't legislate taste. Or you can try and you can never succeed. But I'll make one statement. I spent a career doing ERISA enforcement, which is very similar. And that kind of set me up to...
Just as Byzantine?
Yes, yes. I'm surprised we never, we haven't crossed paths. But, so I, I have some understanding of, of the world that you lived in. And I will second the fact that the world you lived in does in fact transfer into this kind of legal analysis. And, you know, the, 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 the discipline that it takes to, to, to do that legal analysis, the similar discipline to do this in tax law, you know, is a, is a similar kind of, of thing. So I'll just...
And I started out as a bankruptcy lawyer, so that's where we would have intersected, but I was in Chicago at that time.
Ah, okay.
Actually, there is one thing which worried me in terms of the workload. I was thinking, how can people with jobs do this? Your job certainly, but it seems like, yeah, an ever-steady flow of lots of things coming at you. So I don't have a job.
Well, they, you're not on all the cases, you know? There's the, the regular members and then there's the, I forget what they're called, associate or associate members. So, you know, usually you start out as an associate member and work your way up, but you don't get, so you wouldn't be assigned to all the cases, you know? You wouldn't, you wouldn't, actually, our architect on there's been complaining that he is assigned to all the cases. We're, we're working on that. But generally speaking, you know, you, you get some of them, but not, not all of them. So it's not quite as bad as it might, as it might look to you.
Well, that's good to hear.
Because three people sit on a, on a, you know...
Right.
Bench at one time. And, and the interesting thing is that the decisions do have to be unanimous.
Yeah.
So...
I wonder how that happens sometimes.
Yeah, I'm sure there's some dynamics going on there.
A little horse trading.
Yes.
Thank you for putting your, your application in.
Right.
Thank you for considering it.
Thank you. And we're not going to vote tonight, but you'll hear from us. Okay.
Thank you.
And the next item...
Let's say goodbye, Ms. Poverman, so now that we've gotten that.
Yes.
We've gotten...
Selectmen Franco is going to brief us on the findings, recommendations of the Selectmen Noys Bylaw Committee. And I'm just going to step out, so can you...
Sure.
So this is a new perspective for me, at least a different one than I'm used to, at least over the past year and a half. So it's, I think it's a welcome change for me, you know, mix things up a little bit. And while we're waiting for Neil to come back, I'll recognize...
He said for us to go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, okay.
It's my time in the sun, I'm in charge.
Let me recognize Richard Nangle, who's, who we all know is a passionate observer of leaf bylaws and, and a member of this committee. So he's in the audience and I will, I'm sure he'll chip in or chirp in if I make any mistakes or get off script. But I do want to thank him and the rest of the, the members of the committee for, for their hard work and their dedication.
Do you want to mention the other members of the committee?
Sure, I can, I can do that. Let me, let me get my crib sheet so I don't forget anybody. There were eight members, including myself. And you'll see that there, it was a diverse group, both by sort of geographic area, where they came from in town, by age, by previous experience and interactions with the Noys bylaw. So it was myself as chair, Daniel Fishman, Neil Gordon, Judy Myers, Richard, Irene Scharf, Beth Schuman, served for a, a time on the committee, and then Maratoumi. So a good group and, and I hope that you'll agree that it was a protective group of, of individuals as well. So with that, let me go through this brief slide deck. I've got 16 slides here. And in recognition of time and, and the, the details and the intricacies of this, I'm going to fly through portions of it, but I trust that you're going to tell me to slow down or interrupt me if you've got questions or I lose you at, at some point. So before I get too far into this, I want to give you some, do some wayfinding for you and tell you what to expect and give you some guideposts for the presentation. So this is sort of a, a list of what we've got on tap for tonight. First, I'm going to talk about how we got to today, give some details about the committee and the process that we went through, talk for a moment about the current landscape, the, the current bylaws that govern Noys in, in the town. And then talk about the findings and the recommendations of the committee and conclude with a brief conversation about the path forward and where we go from here. So how did we get to today? So two of you, in your infinite wisdom, appointed... So two of you, in your infinite wisdom, appointed a noise bylaw review committee, and...
There were five of us at the time.
There were five. And I wisely, or unwisely, voted to convene the committee as well, and made myself chair, so. So this committee was convened about a year ago. It filed, followed, excuse me, the filing of two warrant articles in successive town meetings, which sought to make some changes to the existing noise bylaw, that's 8.15, Article 8.15. And town meeting, and the Board of Selectmen for that matter, voted no action on both those articles, but during the warrant review process, we heard some things, and convened this committee to sort of check in on the noise situation in town, and find out if there were changes that needed to be made, if we were doing enforcement properly, and there was, allegation is the wrong word, there was an observation that perhaps there were some inconsistencies between the bylaws that govern noise. So we convened a committee to review enforcement, to take a look at whether there were inconsistencies in our bylaws, and then to come back with some recommendations for changes to enforcement procedures and remedies to inconsistencies that may exist. So I want to underscore the fact that this committee's charge was technical in nature, and we were never asked to convene or conduct a policy review and come back with specific policy changes. And to the extent that the committee did wade into policy, it was in response to testimony that we heard and issues that came up during our meetings. I do want to also underscore that this committee, while it was convened to look at noise in general, ended up looking at leaf blower noise in particular. And that was really a function of the fact that that's the issue that emerged as the pressing one during our hearings. We didn't hear from anybody who was complaining about noise generated from other sources. So we went with, went to where the action was, and that was leaf blowers. So I stand before you with a final report to you that really deals exclusively with leaf blower noise. So let me move on to sort of the details and talk a bit about the process. I commented before that there were eight residents, and again, I want to extend my thanks and gratitude to the seven others who joined me on this committee, this voyage through leaf blower conversations. And I underscored the fact that we had a diverse group of people, young and old residents, residents of single-family homes and multifamily dwellings, geographically, north and south Brookline was represented, and we had members who came to the committee with an established interest in talking about noise issues and leaf blower issues, and some people who came in maybe not as actively engaged in the conversation to that point. So I am happy that we brought together a group of people that really came at this from a number of different angles. The committee met five times, and we had sessions with, I think, the three department heads that are most involved in noise issues and leaf blower issues, and that's the chief of police, and the commissioner of public works, and town council. And I also want to highlight the fact that the landscaping community, landscaper community, was an active participant in this committee's deliberations and conversations. So not only were we diverse in terms of membership of the committee, but I think the attendees, in combination with the membership, really brought out everybody who's impacted by the conversation about noise. So that brings us to a conversation about current landscape. What are the rules right now? And I'm going to fly through this a little bit, because I know with Selectmen, we've all memorized the entire set of bylaws we have in town, so we're all familiar with the intricacies of Article 8.15 and 8.31, and what one says and the other doesn't. So 8.15 is sort of the general noise bylaw in town, and this is a bylaw that exists to govern the generation of noise from all types of noise generating devices. You'll see in a second what some of those are, but really this bylaw was put in place to govern noise in recognition of the health and wellness impacts of excessive noise and its impact on quality of life. 8.31 is a bylaw adopted just a few years ago now, which deals exclusively with leaf blowers. And you're going to see that this, the existence of sort of two bylaws talking about leaf blowers was something that the committee focused on, and it made some recommendations around. So with that, why don't I talk a little bit more detail about 8.15. So, as I said, 8.15 governs the generation of all types of noise in town, and it talks about things like vehicle noise, construction and maintenance noise, noise generated from fixed plant equipment, such as a generator, it's electronic devices and musical instruments, leaf blowers, animals, car horns, and alarms. It's the whole shebang, and it's really the place to look, the first place to look when you're talking about noise in the community. What, and now from here on out, I'm going to talk exclusively about leaf blowers. So what 8.15, excuse me, says about leaf blowers is it talks about, is about one noise can be generated, and again, in regards to yard and garden maintenance equipment, that's from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and then 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Saturday, Sunday, and then holidays. And it talks about how loud that noise can be, and you see on the screen here the decibel levels, how loud those devices can be for some lawn care equipment, which is explicitly mentioned in the bylaw. And I do want to highlight the fact that those decibel levels are, as measured from 50 feet away, using the American National Standard Institute's methodology. And just for this board's edification, we most frequently come in contact with this bylaw when we issue a waiver of the noise bylaw. Which brings us to Article 8.31, which, as I said before, is exclusively dealing with leaf blowers. And this article further regulates leaf blowers, and a word about definitions. 8.31 defines a leaf blower as "a portable gasoline-powered machine." That is in contrast to Article 8.15, which defines a leaf blower as "any portable machine used to blow leaves, dirt, other materials." So everything that we're going to talk about, or I'm going to talk about in regards to 8.31, is only in regards to gasoline-powered leaf blowers. So electric-powered leaf blowers, this article does not apply whatsoever, and that's just something helpful to remember as we go through this. So 8.31 restricts gasoline-powered leaf blowers by setting a time-of-year restriction on when they can be used. So again, leaf blowers may be used between March 15th and May 15th, and then also between September 15th and December 15th. Leaf blower use in the month of August, for example, is not supposed to happen, and is a violation of the bylaws. A quick word about exceptions. The town and its contractors are exempted from Article 8.31, and owners of non-residential parcels greater than five acres in size, with five or more acres of open space, are also exempted. So big parcels that have a lot of open space, 8.31 does not apply to. Another interesting wrinkle in the...
The country club exemption.
Amongst others. So let me talk a bit about finding and recommendations here. And I'm going to go through this in a little bit of quick succession, but I know that all of you have the report in front of you, and have read it and committed it to memory, so we will be in this together, I'm sure. So as I mentioned earlier, nobody came to us with concerns about noise generated by other sources other than leaf blowers, and that's why this report that you have in front of you focuses exclusively on leaf blower noise. The committee, and then I should say that this led the committee to come to the conclusion that there's general satisfaction with the regulation of noise in town, except for that generated by lawn care equipment.
I've got to just say at this point that that's quite a tribute to our police department, because a few years ago, we were getting tons of complaints about party noise issues.
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that up, Selectman Daley. There is a separate bylaw, which I have not touched upon now, which I know Selectman Heller played a large role in getting adopted. That's Article 8.29 of the bylaws. So that, I echo your sentiments, compliments to the police department, and to Selectman Heller, and some other residents of her neighborhood, in bringing that issue to the attention. A few years before that concern was really articulated, there was a lot of concern about drum sets in practice there, and drilling, and construction noise that occurred both during the day and in the evening, and I think the adoption and enforcement of Article 8.15 in particular addressed that, so compliments all around. The committee also found, it's going to shock everybody, that there are violations that do occur of both these noise bylaws.
That is shocking.
Shocking, in regards both to leaf blowers and otherwise. And it's important to underscore that the committee did not, was not presented with any evidence to say that there's one particular group of people that offends at a greater rate than anybody else. Now, I'm not saying that there isn't one party that's more guilty than others, I'm simply saying the committee didn't see anything that was conclusive, that said that all our leaf blower violations are the result of property owners, or they're all the result of landscape contractors. Through testimony and conversation, it also became clear that there was widespread confusion about what the current rules governing leaf blowers are, and when leaf blowers can be used, and to whom the rules actually apply. We heard from people who were convinced that Article 8.31 applied to electric leaf blowers, and who were equally convinced that Article 8.15 and 8.31 didn't apply to homeowners. They thought this was just a landscape contractor rule. So there was some confusion that persists out in the community. We also found that Articles 8.15 and 8.31 are not in conflict with one another, but it is certainly not clear what is said in those two bylaws, those two articles, and the mere fact that there are two articles that govern leaf blower noise is confusing in and of itself. There are some residents, the committee found, who want further restrictions on the use of leaf blowers and lawn care equipment in general, and there is general dissatisfaction in the community with the amount of leaf blower noise that's being generated. And I'll conclude by saying, the last finding that we came to was that efforts to educate residents and the impacted parties about the current rules governing the generation of noise, including leaf blowers, are laudable as they exist today, but could be expanded and improved upon, and you'll see one recommendation in the committee's report that speaks to that. And with that, I know you've all been waiting with bated breath to hear the recommendations. There are 12 of them, and they fit into two different categories. There are eight which are immediately implementable, and there are four additional recommendations which require some additional process to take place. Another way to break them down is eight that are sort of in line with the Selectmen's charge, and four that we wanted extra credit for and gave to you to mull over and take some further action on perhaps. So let me speak in a little bit of detail about the eight immediately implementable recommendations to begin with, and I'm going to go right down the eight here, so if you want a quick reference guide, just refer to the report that's in your packet. The first recommendation we made is that we crib off the city of Cambridge and consider implementing a registration system for all our landscape contractors that operate in the town of Brookline. Again, the city of Cambridge does this now. I wouldn't say it's popular with the landscape contractor community, but it's something that they see the value in and were willing to go along with, at least in our conversations with the committee.
Do we have the authority to do that?
So it's my understanding, and I would defer to town council, that we can do it without going to town meeting for a bylaw.
Could we compel someone to register?
Sure. We compel peddlers to register, for example, and if they don't, then it's a violation of our bylaws, and they get a citation.
Yeah, but this wouldn't be a bylaw, so...
Well, to be continued in the conversation.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, I share Neil's concern that it may need to be a bylaw.
Well, we've missed the filing deadline for the fall town meeting, and fortunately, there'll be another town meeting in the spring.
We can discuss this again.
We can discuss it again, and put forward a warrant article to have a bylaw adopted, if it's the will of this board and ultimately of town meeting to go in that direction.
Did you look into, you said crib off the city of Cambridge, did you look into how it works in Cambridge, and whether it's effective, and what the problems are, et cetera?
So we did a high-level review. We certainly didn't get into the details of how the city of Cambridge does their registration system. From our slightly more than cursory examination, it seemed to be effective and efficient. And I'll point to two particular areas where the city of Cambridge, as we understand, had some success in implementing this registration system. One was that as part of the Cambridge sort of registration system, contractors were required to certify that they were aware of the rules that governed leaf blower use, and they had to certify that all the equipment that they were going to operate in the city of Cambridge was compliant with those rules. So by requiring that sort of proactive certification at the beginning, and swearing that you know what the rules are and that you're going to abide by them, it takes away sort of the excuse of ignorance at the back end, when there is a problem. And the second benefit that we've seen, or the city of Cambridge has seen, as we understood it, was that it allowed for the police department and the enforcement authorities in Cambridge to see some trends that emerged. So if they have a list of a particular contractor's clients, and they found that, you know, they're getting a call every Tuesday from one of the addresses that the client, that is on a particular contractor's client list, it sort of leads them to address an issue which may be isolated to one contractor rather than broad-based. And it also gets at the issue of, a call is made and saying, you know, leaf blower's being used inappropriately, either it's too loud, or it's the wrong time of year, and the police or the enforcement authorities show up, and there's nobody there. Again, if a trend emerges, the enforcement authorities can go back to the list of client lists that have been submitted and say, well, it seems like the contractor at this particular address is X, and then they can go have a conversation. So more work to be done, I think. A particular conversation, a detailed conversation with the city of Cambridge is in order, but our preliminary view of this seemed to indicate that it was something that merited a little bit more consideration and conversation in Brookline.
So essentially, you're recommending that we adopt, that we promulgate some regulations under the bylaw, 8.31.
Right, which we have the authority to do right now, and to the extent that it does require a separate bylaw to be adopted.
We can have leaf blower town meeting number four.
So let me move on to the second recommendation. This is one particularly in regards to improving public education. I spoke a moment ago about the fact that there's some public education that takes place right now, and the committee found that we could improve and expand upon those public education efforts, and here's the way that the committee thought that that could take place. We specifically suggested the creation of a pamphlet which could be used both as an educational tool, outside of enforcement calls, so maybe distributed in town hall, distributed at town events, Brookline Day, for example, and maybe even distributed at enforcement calls as an educational means, a leave behind to say, you know, we're here because we've gotten a complaint, you're actually not compliant with the bylaw, here's some more information about what the bylaw says and what the rules are, and please review... about what the bylaw says and what the rules are, and please review it and abide by the rules going forward. And we, the committee, recommended that that pamphlet be created in a minimum of English and Spanish in light of the populations, the community that does the vast majority of these enforcement, excuse me, does the vast majority of these landscape...
Work.
Work. We also, in the report, talked about partnering with civic groups and neighborhood associations to get the word out about what the rules are. We recommended, specific to the times of year that it becomes permissible to use or to not use leaf blowers, that the town step up its advertising of the impending change and do that in the form of potentially a tab advertisement, an insert in townwide mailings, use of the town's social media account, maybe even the installation of some sandwich boards at key intersections around town, similar to what we do for election days. Our third recommendation was to, actually, our third and our fourth recommendation was to make some edits to Articles 8.15 and 8.31 to improve the clarity of the articles and increase the likelihood that people know what the rules are. And amongst the edits that we suggested were creating a specific exemption section in 8.31. As it stands now, the exemptions are sort of marbled into another section of the bylaw, and you've got to sort of go looking for them. So calling them out in their own specific section entitled exemptions might help to improve understanding of who this applies to and who it doesn't apply to. We made a recommendation that language be simplified and made a recommendation that references to 8.31 be made in Article 8.15 and vice versa. So if you stumble upon one article, you don't think naively that there's not a second article, that you've got to continue your digging to find out about leaf blowers. And in the report, there's actually redlined versions of what those changes might look like, so that's an easy warrant article to file for us. Our fifth recommendation, and this starts a whole suite of recommendations that get into operational type things, was to encourage the Police Department to engage in proactive enforcement. There is a perception that the committee heard throughout its meetings, its deliberations, its process, that the police lie in wait, waiting for complaints to be received about leaf blower violations, and only then do they go out and actually seek to do enforcement. And we came to the conclusion, and we made the recommendation, that the police should deal with possible violations if they encounter them on patrol, before a complaint is received, and even anticipate complaints. So again, if they're getting a call about a particular address every Tuesday at 7:30 in the morning, well, it's a trend, and the police may want to be there at 7:25 in the morning on that Tuesday, because chances are, there's going to be a call and they can sort of nip it in the bud. The police, in this basis to the next recommendation, the police should also feel comfortable using all the enforcement tools at their disposal. There is a perception in the community that officers are being encouraged to issue warnings rather than citations. And to the extent this is happening, the committee felt as though no such direction should be given, that the police should be, feel comfortable using both a warning and a citation as a tool to impel compliance with the bylaws, but that they should use appropriate discretion. We're certainly not recommending that every time there's a violation of one of these two bylaws, a citation be issued, nor are we recommending that warnings should be the only thing done. We want, we trust the Police Department and its officers to use discretion, but to the extent that somebody is saying, or there's a perception that we don't want citations issued, that's not the case. Everybody should feel comfortable doing whatever is in their power. And underscore the fact that the goal here is not to issue tickets or to issue warnings, it's to have people abide by the bylaws. The Department of Public Works should continue its practice of buying equipment that's compliant with Article 8.15, with the noise limits set out there. That's something they do today, and they should continue to do it going forward. And wrapping out, or rounding out, I should say, the immediately implementable group of recommendations, the DPW, Parks and Open Space Division of the DPW, excuse me, should engage in a conversation, look for ways to minimize their use of leaf blowers when it makes sense.
So could I ask one more question?
Certainly.
About this recommendation, and that is, does the department purchase just gasoline-powered leaf blowers, or they purchase both, or just electric?
So we heard a couple of weeks ago, when we did a review of, I believe, Article 10, that right now, the department is only purchasing gasoline-powered leaf blowers. They have in the past done some tests to see what would, how much of an additional burden, if any, it would be to not use leaf blowers. And they have found in the past that it requires more work to use a rake and a broom and a tarp than it does use a leaf blower.
But what about the electric leaf blower?
So we also heard during that conversation that operationally, it was difficult for them to use electric leaf blowers. They would have to have a generator on their truck probably to plug into, and battery-powered leaf blowers, I think we heard, just don't have the strength and the battery life isn't long enough to allow them to use them. So that's been the result of their investigations in the past, but we, as a committee, thought that those conversations, those investigations should continue into the future.
And gas generators allowed in and of themselves?
Right. I know it's an issue, I think that...
And they spew forth noxious fumes.
So in light of the time here, let me quickly go through these additional process required recommendations. And again, these are things that we would not be able to, we as a board would not be able to put into place tomorrow. They would require either additional public conversation and potentially even the appointment of a successor committee to this noise bylaw committee whose report I'm here presenting to you. So we came back with a recommendation that Article 8.15 should be revisited, reviewed, and possibly rewritten in its entirety with an eye towards improving its clarity and ensuring that the requirements, the noise requirements that are written into there reflect technological improvements and efficiencies that have taken place since it was originally implemented. We as a committee didn't have the technical expertise on the committee to really get into that issue, but it's something we should think about, whether 67 decibels for a leaf blower is a stringent enough requirement. The second immediately implementable recommendation that we came back with was one that was about whether the provisions of Article 8.31 should apply not just to gasoline-powered leaf blowers, but also to electric leaf blowers. They're doing the same thing, you know, we heard some comments that it's difficult for people to discern between the two, that they're essentially, in terms of noise, interchangeable. So we wanted to encourage a conversation to take place about whether they should be treated the same in the town bylaws. And again, we as a committee didn't have the technical expertise to really get into whether they actually are interchangeable from a noise perspective, and beyond that, that would be a huge policy shift, and we as a committee weren't charged with doing a policy review. So we felt like we needed maybe a bigger committee, but certainly more publicity about the fact that this was something that was being considered. The third recommendation under this sort of additional process required category was sort of my pet issue. I am confused, and I think other members of the committee agreed with me, we don't know what the word portable means. It is not explicitly defined in either 8.15 or 8.31. There seems to be a perception right now that it refers to handheld leaf blowers and backpack-powered leaf blowers, but I would make the argument that a leaf blower on wheels is also portable, as is one that's in the bed of a truck. So we just need to know what portable means, and again, a little bit more of a conversation needs to take place, as this committee wasn't charged with doing the policy changes, we're recommending policy changes. And then the final recommendation under this category is giving some consideration as to whether contractors and homeowners should be cited when a violation of 8.15 and/or 8.31 occurs. I do want to set the record straight here, there is a small mistake in the final report. We actually do have this power under 8.15 currently. For those keeping score at home, it's 8.15.9B gives us the power to cite both the owner of a property and a non-owner who offends. But consideration has to be given, I think, to what we want to do about Article 8.31. I will conclude, this second to last section of my presentation, by saying that this sort of came out of something we actually heard from the landscape contractor community. They said that they are pressed by their employers, by the homeowners that contracted them, to use leaf blowers, sometimes outside of what's permissible in the bylaws. So they're put in this position where they've got to choose between abiding by the bylaws or putting their business, their paycheck, in peril. And adding a little bit of financial penalty to the homeowner might alleviate the pressure that the contractors find themselves under. So something for consideration. And briefly, the path forward. So this committee has now delivered recommendations to you, and it's up to this board to decide what you want to do with them. We could file a warrant article or warrant articles to implement some of the recommended changes. We can vote some policy changes. Do we want to convene a further committee to pick up one or more of those additional process required recommendations? I think it's probably something that we as a board will want to mull over and have a conversation about, and stay tuned. And with that, I'm done. No more leaf blowers for me.
Selectman Daley.
Well, I just want to say how well your report is written. I like the way it was organized, and very good. And I don't mean to discourage you at all. I will say that I was chairman of the last revision of the noise bylaw, the 8.15, where we went through and kind of redid the whole bylaw. And some of your thoughts, we tried to do, we actually developed a little pamphlet about, here's what's in the noise bylaw, and we tried to encourage the Police Department to carry copies of it with them and hand out. And, you know, somewhere, there's many slip twicks, the cup and the lip, the police didn't seem to hand those out. So I don't mean to discourage you, but I will say that some of the, we had some of those ideas too, and we just could not seem to get them to follow through.
What's the saying, the squeaky wheel gets the grease? So maybe if we engage in this conversation again, we might have a different result.
Yeah, I think having this come up for the, what, the fourth time...
This is the third meeting, so if we discuss it any night, it'll be the fourth town meeting we discuss leaf blowers.
Well, I promise you that this is going to be an issue that keeps coming back, whether we as a board, we as town meeting like it or not. There's widespread confusion and dissatisfaction, so I'm of the position that we should sort of seize the, grab the bird by the horns and try and be proactive and control the conversation.
Yeah. Well, I will add that I think we should implement some of your recommendations. I don't think we need another committee. I think you've done a good job on this, and I appreciate Mr. Engel and all your other members that helped with it. And so it's, we just need to figure out, you know, how to implement them.
I agree with that. I think another committee is, you know, we can have so much process that we lose sight of the goal. And the goal here is to make the situation better and get everybody on the same page. And another committee is just not going to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Selectman Franco, for a comprehensive report. Great job by the committee. Okay, moving on to warrant articles, and this is a public hearing, possible vote on two warrant articles tonight. The first one up is Article number three, which is budget amendments. Ms. Goff?
Good evening. So Article three is inserted into the fall town meeting in order to address any budget amendments that might be required for the FY 2016 budget. We do have a few adjustments that we'll be making this fall. The first is to account for higher state aid than what we had originally voted by town meeting this past spring. The second is an adjustment to both the group health and the building department budgets due to the favorable override. There were commitments to repair maintenance for schools, and there will need to be an adjustment to the group health budget based on onboarding additional employees as a result of the favorable override. The third adjustment that would need to be made is just to reset the water and sewer budget, actually bring it lower to line up with the final MWRA assessment. So the additional state aid, I'll start there. So there's an additional 186-917 that would need to be appropriated this town meeting. We had the town school partnership meeting this morning where we discussed the recommendation to have all of that money come to the town side. This recommendation was made due to the adjustment that we had made prior to the override vote, which basically buffered the schools from group health increases that we were seeing from GIC rates. So the recommendation is for the 186-917 to flow to the town, and we are recommending that the town use the funds for a parks forestry vehicle. We had a fire this past summer in our Hammond Street garage. We looked into repairing the vehicle and looked into insurance options, and unfortunately, the vehicle's a total loss and the, what we would get back from the insurance company does not meet what we would have to pay for a deductible. So we would need to actually lease a new vehicle and also would need to pay for rental for the time period until the new vehicle came in. The second recommendation is for diversity training. As you know, the director...
Can I just ask a question about the park forestry vehicle?
Sure.
It sounded like a lot of money to me for renting for $28,000, and then the first year of a lease payment for a replacement is $66,000. So how much are these vehicles, if you went out to buy one?
They're pretty big. I think the quote for the vehicle, for the, I don't remember. $197 is the replacement cost of the vehicle.
Ah.
They're giants.
In my past life, I was a town employee, and I worked for the parks division for a summer and had the opportunity to work on the tree truck. So I can speak to the fact that they are big vehicles and it's a complex set of machinery. It's got a sort of a cherry picker lift on it, I think. So it's a big truck.
Okay. Well, some other time, Ms. Gallantime will have to tell us about your work record. I was, just the $28,000 rental seemed like kind of throwing away money, so why not go ahead and lease?
So they need, the equipment needs to be built, so they can't order the equipment until after town meeting votes on this.
So the rental is for some lesser, smaller...
I anticipated ten months at $2,800 a month. So just to give them a wiggle room in case the vehicle comes in late. The event happened in August, so they've actually already started to lease a vehicle, because they can't function without, otherwise they'll be paying more for a contractor to do the same work.
Okay.
Are you leasing a vehicle now?
Yeah. Yes.
So this is a lease?
They're renting a vehicle now, and then they would need to lease purchase a vehicle that they would actually own.
I see, okay. And why did it go on fire?
It was an electrical fire in the cab of the vehicle.
And do we have any recourse on that? That sounds like a product liability case to me.
Well, we looked, it's over, it's past the warranty. I think the vehicle's over 10 years old.
Ah.
So it was every option we explored, we kind of hit a wall, so.
All right.
The second recommendation is for diversity training. The Director of Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations is in the midst of performing an assessment of the racial climate in town. We anticipate that as a result of that assessment, there will be some training required. In addition, we would be looking to provide some MCAD training to the fire department. The third recommendation is for 72-917, basically the balance of the state aid to be put into the collective bargaining reserve. We are currently in Joint Labor Management Commission with the fire union, and although, you know, it's still uncertain how the outcome will be, there is a chance that it could be more than what we've currently budgeted.
Let me ask you regarding the diversity training. So this is just for any tree that will come out of the review. What about the review itself? Is that covered somewhere else?
Yeah, we funded the review with the balance of the professional services budget that the town administrator has at his disposal.
And that covers both the police and fire and any other review that's to be?
Purely police and fire for that particular assessment.
So we're going to need more at some point?
Potentially. I think Dr. Jellino, I think, is still looking into this, and we were supposed to meet today, but we need to reschedule, so. Okay, if the town's adjustments are ready to go, we can just move on to the school-related adjustments. So the school committed $100,000 to the building department in order to provide repair maintenance services to school buildings, considering the expansion and growth to their footprint. So the budget amendment is just the mechanism to get those funds into the building department so that Charlie can use them for his repairs. Group health is still very early, so I actually don't have a vote for you this evening because I'm still waiting for the group health numbers to settle. School department is still in the midst of onboarding employees, and I'm hopeful that by the end of October, that we'll have hopefully a little bit of settlement there, that we can actually look at the group health numbers and hopefully get a better sense of how much we would need to provide for group health.
Okay, so the bottom line is we're not ready to vote this. Any questions, comments? This is a public hearing, and I don't see anyone wishing to speak on this warrant article.
Controversial topic.
So I think, thank you very much. Moving on to Article Six, and this is an article that would authorize the filing and acceptance of grants with and from the Commonwealth Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the parkland acquisition renovations for the community's grant program. Boy, this is a mouthful. For improvements of Lars Anderson Park and dedicated portion of said park for park purposes. Ms. Gallantine.
Good evening, Erin Gallantine, Director of Parks and Open Space. And this evening you have Article Six before you. You are familiar with this, as I came before the Board of Selectmen prior to submitting the park grant for capital improvements to Lars Anderson Park. And at that point in time, the Board of Selectmen authorized the Town of Brookline to go forward with the submittal. This warrant article provides for the language that is required for town meeting to vote on in order for us to be able to enter into a contract with the Commonwealth should we be awarded the grant. And most specifically, it protects the project area under Article 97. And the Commonwealth feels that this is, in essence, they're putting capital funding into a public project, they have no direct interest or control of the land, and what they want in return for their investment is that it be protected as parkland under Article 97. So I thought that it would be helpful. I know that in the packets that you have for the warrant article, you have the engineer's plan that shows the project area and the 55 acres that we're proposing be protected with this language under Article 97, and then there is an operations portion as well. And so I have a couple slides just to show you an aerial view of what that actually looks like on the park. So this is just, you know, a beautiful aerial of our Lars Anderson Park, which we consider the flagship park, the Town of Brookline. So here is an aerial, and the area in red is the park project area and coincides with the plan that you have in front of you. So that space is 55 acres, it's dedicated parkland, and then the area to the lower right in the hatch marks is the area that we're defining as the operations area, and that is 10 acres, that is not part of this vote and being protected under Article 97. Thought I would also show you that there's an existing preservation restriction on the top of the hill, and the town had grants earlier, and this entire portion is already under a preservation restriction, and any change to the use in this portion of the site would require some review, and would need to go before Mass Historic. The park improvements that we're proposing, one of the questions that I've received in talking to the Subcommittee of Advisory and the full committee of advisory is, well, do we need the 55 acres? Why that 55? Well, there are a couple of reasons. One is this project that we've submitted is for circulation improvements, and so the area really follows what you can see is the access roadway, the drainage improvements that will happen on both sides of that roadway, and then the perimeter path. So that is, in essence, how we really came about defining that space as being the project area. It's also what everybody commonly recognizes as the active open parkland that everyone So I'm happy to answer any questions.
So tell us about this, the grant, and when are we going to hear? And what if we don't get the grant?
So, we have a new administration, as you know, and so the staff is not sure when we would hear definitively about the grant, but they thought that it would be the end of October, beginning of November. So my hope is that we would know before town meeting, but I can't be sure, and they couldn't give me a definitive answer on that. If town meeting voted for this, the language as it's written is protecting the land under Article 97 and is, in essence, doing that. There isn't a clause specifically saying if we get the grant, we are then protecting it under Article 97. It's, in essence, doing that in preparation for entering into a contract. And we have done this with other parks, you know, going back to the 70s with land and water conservation funding in the town.
I thought when we discussed this, though, last, we were going to write the article so that we had a, that we could conditionally vote this at town meeting, depending on whether or not we got the grant.
That is not my recollection.
Okay. Well, I mean, we, because as I have mentioned, Lars Anderson has come up in conversations about if we need an additional school. And that's, and I know we have that cut out, but that, the, in that section is the Transportation Museum, which I think is a protected historic building, right?
It is not under a preservation restriction, so it is historically significant, and it is a, Lars Anderson Park is on the National and State Register of Historic Places, and certainly the carriage house itself, I mean, there may be some protection of that structure. We're not proposing any change to that structure.
No, I'm just saying, the amount that's excluded from, where we would potentially have to put the school, if we wanted to put a school there, is pretty small, and included on that is the Transportation Museum building, the carriage house, which I think we would have issues if we said, oh, we need to do something with that. I suppose we could move it over the line into the protected area, right?
I think it depends, honestly, what you would be proposing to do.
Have you had conversations with other town departments, like the schools?
Yes, yes, we have. I mean, I had, before I actually came to the Board of Selectmen to request consideration to submit the grant, I had met with Cara Bruton, who was working with the school committee specifically on looking at what alternatives were, and at that point in time, she was comfortable and had relayed this proposal with the excluded area and the land that was included in the excluded area. I would say that since that time that we've submitted it and through some of our conversations with the Subcommittee of Advisory and the full advisory, and subsequently as well with the capital Subcommittee of the School Department, I think they're concerned about losing flexibility and options. And so even though maybe initially this seemed fine, given possible ideas, what if there were some tweaks, or do we want to have Lars Anderson on the table as we're moving forward with the facilities needs assessment through the town, also the open space parcels assessment and the school's analysis of building needs? So I think that advisory voted no action on this warrant article with a vote of six to 14.
Right. I, you may recall that during the B-Space process, at one meeting, an architect presented a drawing of a potential high school on the sledding field, which I found downright appalling. And my reaction to that was kind of, over my dead body, are you going to put a high school there? And, you know, I still feel that way, and I recognize that Lars Anderson is, in fact, kind of the crown jewel of our parks. But I personally would want to make sure that, before we lock everything up, that we've got it right, and that it kind of meshes in with all the other stuff that we're considering. There's a lot in play, and there's going to be, one of the things in play is going to be coming, is, you know, we're going to be presenting the school site study, and maybe once that's presented, things will be a little clearer as to where things are.
I would be concerned about, you know, voting at town meeting to do this and then hearing about the grant later and not getting the grant, and that to me would be ridiculous. In that event, I would want to vote no action at town meeting if we hadn't heard about the grant first, because the reason we're doing it is to get the funds to make the improvements, and if we don't have the money to make the improvements, but we're locking in some other things, that doesn't make any sense.
So we may know before town meeting. I would just say that there have been situations for Skyline Park and Fisher Hill Reservoir where town meeting did take these votes, frankly, because it's, it is parkland. And so I think part of it is, and when the commission was putting this together, it seemed kind of common sense, honestly. It is parkland, it served as parkland for decades at this point, over 65 years, so it didn't seem controversial.
Well, I certainly don't think we'll ever change it. I mean, it's going to be parkland, I'm not going to ever, at least not, you know, I feel like Neil, over my dead body is going to be, you know, a sledding field or, you know, whatever, but still in all, I think that we're doing, it's been parkland for all these years. We can continue to have it as parkland for all these years, we don't have to put it into a lockdown situation. And, you know, we're doing it specifically to get the grant money, and if we don't have the grant money, then it doesn't make sense, in my view.
The impetus is absolutely the grant. Frankly, the language that is in the warrant article is directly really specified by the Commonwealth.
I noticed that maybe just a small sliver of Lars Anderson actually isn't in the Town of Brookline. And this may be the, one of the rare cases in town where the town owns property not within the town borders. I'm wondering if as a practical matter, and you may not know the answer to this question, so you can tell me that you don't know, and I'll chase somebody else down, as a practical matter, if we actually can build anything on that admittedly small sliver of Boston and receive funding from a state agency or get grant money to help us out with it, as we frequently do when we construct a town facility, or because it's not within the borders, we really have to bear the cost just by ourselves?
So I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, in particular as it relates to grants and funding. It is Town of Brookline property that is in the city of Boston. I do know that there was generally a thought that apart from, let's say, some input from the surrounding neighborhood, that development would be possible, but as a practical matter, it would be complicated and cumbersome to have to go to the building department in Boston, and duplicative as well, to get permits for singular construction project.
Have we ever explored trying to annex that land?
I have suggested that to our Director of Engineering and suggested that it may make sense. It certainly makes sense for us, but at what point in time would we be in a conversation with the city of Boston to bring that up and negotiate that?
I'm making skeptical looks on my-
They don't get any-
That's what I got.
It's not as if they get any, you know, there's not really any, quote, benefit. I mean, I suppose it's a benefit in that we maintain it and their residents use it, but their residents could use it anyway. I'm sure they use Lars Anderson Park.
I'm willing to engage in a conversation if the exchange is over compensation, over money, but if they say, well, you can have that, but we want this part of town, I'm not going to take that bait, so. You say that at the onset. No land swaps with the city of Boston.
Well, this is a public hearing. Would anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Mr. Bain?
I'm John Bain, I'm chairman of Park and Rec, and, you know, this is a flagship park in our town that everybody uses as far as, whether they live in Brookline or they don't live in Brookline. And it's the one spot that you can really go up to and feel that you're away from the noise and the trucks and the buses and the horn blowing, and it's a very peaceful area. And you don't need to be, unlike a beach, for instance, where you're elbow to elbow with your people that you don't know, you can spread out up there and really enjoy- You can spread out up there and really enjoy what it's meant to be. As far as, you know, Erin has presented her case, I think, eloquently, as usual. I mean, she does a great job for us and the town. And I would like to, you know, you take Devotion, for instance. Devotion is going to be expanded, and it's also going to be taking away some open space for the, and so once that open space is taken away, we don't get it back. And this town has been crying for years for field space, open space, and what else can I say? Once I feel, as a Commissioner or as a citizen, once we take a bite out of this park, somebody's going to ask for another one. And that bothers me. It's a jewel. It's well-used, extremely well-maintained, and what else can I say? I would hope that you would support it, and town meeting would support the opportunity for four hundred thousand dollars to complete the project that we've planned. I don't think the town, at this point, with the strength of, with the area of the economy, that we can come up with the additional four hundred thousand to make the park suitable and more safe. That road is in terrible shape. And I believe that this would be a great benefit to the town. Thank you.
So the bite that would be taken out would be preserving it currently, which could be used for recreational, charitable, and educational services? No.
No.
No. Once it's ninety-seven, once it's Article ninety-seven, it's park.
Right. I'm saying...
He's talking about...
Oh, the crosshatch area. That would be controlled by the deed, which is just as you said.
So are we talking about taking a piece of that crosshatch area and adding it to the park?
No. That's excluded from, it's the whole park except for the crosshatch.
So what was that white...
That's a preservation restriction that's already in place.
Preservation on the building?
This. It's the top of the hill.
Yeah.
So how did that skating rink get in there with the preservation restriction? Was it before?
It actually preceded that. And there is some Land and Water Conservation Fund that supported the construction of the outdoor rink. And they consider outdoor rinks as an outdoor recreational use.
Okay.
So let me ask Chairman Wyszynski, and I guess, I guess it was Selectman Heller as well, who, when you're saying you would never want to see anything on the sledding field, I get that, but are you saying you also rule out anything anywhere in the park in terms of a school use?
I would like to see what's being proposed. So, for example, you know, there's, there's some parts of the park that are used, that have buildings that are quite ugly.
Well, and I would assume that, you know, we could have some recreational, I mean, obviously, that is parkland, and kids need parks, and they need to go to parks and be active for exercise, et cetera. So I'm not ruling that out necessarily, but I wouldn't, I mean, I think sledding hills deteriorate property in ways that we may not want because of, you know, so they tear up the grass, they tear up the, you know, they can, they can be pretty rough on the terrain.
Oh, so you guys are at cross purposes, because I think Selectman Wyszynski is trying to preserve that sledding field at all costs, but, yeah, okay. I'm confused as to why the rest of the board is here.
I'll say categorically that I was appalled at that drawing that I saw at B-Space. That's me.
I will certainly let the board know immediately if we have any word from the Commonwealth, one way or the other.
I know you said that the Advisory Committee voted no action by a large margin. I had heard through the grapevine, or perhaps read someplace, that the Subcommittee came back with some language changes.
Yes, and the language change was specifically around the four hundred thousand dollars. And they wanted the language to read up to four hundred thousand dollars. And the whole point being that the town would not borrow any amount in excess of whatever grant was awarded.
Yeah, I, it had to do with...
The language changes are in your info packet.
Okay.
Thank you, Melissa.
Any other questions, comments? I don't, we're not going to vote tonight on this one. I think there's more happening, and more information that we'll be getting on this between now and town meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we have board and commission appointments. I'll turn it over to Mr. Kleckner.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have on your calendar this evening the question of making appointments to the Brookline Arts Commission. And there are many, several vacancies or openings on this commission, more than there are for the candidates who are, have expressed interest. So I'm just going to, some of them are reappointments, I'll take those separately, but I'll just list the names, and if you could indicate your concurrence.
So let me just ask a clarifying question.
Yes.
The new candidates, are we going to put them in the two thousand fifteen vacancies?
That's what I would suggest.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. So assuming that they're all twenty-fif, three-year terms of appointment beginning in twenty-fifteen. Incumbents to be reappointed, Jeremy Kindle.
Aye.
Aye.
Kat Zevitskaya.
Aye.
And the new candidates are Donna Holenberg, Holengurk.
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter McDonald.
Aye.
Courtney McGlynn.
Aye.
Thank you.
And that concludes our meeting tonight. Thank you, everybody.